Okay, good morning. We're going to open our meeting for the Board of Commissioners November the 22nd, day before Thanksgiving. So, that's probably why not very many people are here this morning. They're traveling to get ahead of cruddy weather to get to their Thanksgiving destinations. Okay, George, would you lead us in the place this morning, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to wait till the traffic's worse. Okay, all right. This is a public meeting, of course. We have two hearings this morning, actually three hearings, two here at the beginning and one at the end. Before we get into that, Commissioner Elfrin, awards and recognitions.
Yes, we do have a card that's come to us. It said, "Dear Mr. Elfrin, it should be addressed to all Commissioners. Thank you," and all citizens of Yumattila County for that matter. "Thank you for bumping our livestock at the Yumattila County Fair. It was greatly appreciated and we would love for you to come next year." That's signed by the Pilot Rock Woolly Wranglers.
Okay. It's always good to get those from the kids.
It is.
Minutes from our previous meeting, Doug?
There aren't any.
Okay. And then additions to the agenda this morning?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. This is a time point in the meeting. If you are not scheduled to be on our agenda, and our agenda's up there, you see part of it anyway, if you're not part of the agenda, this is a point for you to make public comment this morning. So with that, is there anyone that wants to speak to the Board and make a public comment? Yes, if you'd come forward.
Is the Feidville and Edwards, are we able to speak?
Yes, yes, that's, it's part of the agenda. Okay. Anyone else, a public comment? Okay, moving on then, our regular business. The first item is the ambulance service areas. There's applications and recommendations. At this point in time, this is a public hearing, so I am going to open the hearing and ask for a staff report.
Morning Commissioners, my name is Tom Roberts, Yumattila County Emergency Manager, and I am also the individual responsible for administering the ambulance service area plan and as such, the liaison between the Commission and the Ambulance Service Area Committee. The ambulance service applications for franchise were sent out following a six-month extension. It was graciously awarded by this Board so that we had time to revamp our ambulance service area plan. Those applications have been received and reviewed by the Ambulance Service Area Committee. It is the Ambulance Service Area Committee's recommendation that we proceed as follows. We received one application for franchise for ambulance service area one, which is currently serviced by Pendleton Fire Department. The application was by Pendleton Fire Department and ambulance service. The only condition that we would recommend being applied to that application would be that they complete a process that is currently in the works with St. Anthony Hospital, whereas they need to have a, it's a new requirement under our new plan, a plan in place for the inter-transfer capabilities between hospitals. As you recall, one of the changes we made to this current addition of the ambulance service area plan is that ambulance services that will be providing transport between facilities will need to have a plan in place to ensure that they can provide timely service for said transfers. A plan was already put in place in Hermiston between Good Shepherd Hospital and Fire District Number One, and that has been in process between St. Anthony's and Pendleton, and so the Committee believes that in good faith, because it's a new recommendation, that we allow them until the end of this calendar year to complete that process. But we, they are actively pursuing and working on it. As far as ASA number two goes, we had one application for service, and that was, the sole applicant was Yumattila County Fire District Number One with their ambulance service, and the Committee recommends that we award franchising to them with no caveats. The Milton Free Water Ambulance Service Area, also ASA number four, there was one application for franchise for ASA number four, is the recommendation that franchising be provided to Instant Resource Enterprises Incorporated, which is the current franchise holder. One application was received for ASA five, which is the Athena Weston area, and it is also the recommendation of the Committee that franchises be awarded to East Yumattila County Ambulance Area Health District for service in ASA number five. ASA number six, there was no formal application applied for ASA number six. The Committee has met and discussed options with how to proceed forward. This is the Mill Creek area, and in discussions with the current ambulance service provider, we've been able to determine that they were not 100% sure at this point in time that they would be able to apply their services to a full five-year term, but they are willing to work with us for coverage until either they resolve that question mark on their end or we find an alternative option. So in coordination with County Council, we determined that the best course of action would be to extend their current agreement on a year-by-year basis or until we find a permanent solution for that. And so therefore, that is the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on ASA six for that franchise. And then ASA seven, which is the Tribes, we received an application from the Tribal Fire Department and ambulance service, and we recommend franchising of that. Any questions?
Questions from colleagues?
Just a question on ASA six. Are they willing to accept an extension?
Their representative indicated as much, that they were reaching out to everybody impacted by the potential issues that they're looking at needing to resolve and are willing to work with each of those providers until a resolution is found. And so, yes, I believe that's the short answer.
On ASA one, you don't anticipate any difficulties with an inter-facility agreement with St. Anthony?
I do not. In fact, the day after the Ambulance Service Area Committee met, they were supposed to have a meeting between the two entities to look over their draft and do some more work on it. They've been actively pursuing that since the adoption of the current ASA plan, so it's been a work in progress, and I anticipate that that will be completed very soon, most likely by the end of the year, as required.
I have nothing further.
Doug, can, do we want to bring in the possibility of the future of six right now?
Well, I think the way it's proposed is just to have it on an annual basis renewable at their option, and so that, for up to five years. So it is covered under the order.
Okay. Because I will, there's some other things that I will go ahead and look into, and I shared that with our County Council, specifically just on number six.
Okay, and I have a few other options that we can discuss as well, moving forward, and hopefully we'll find a permanent resolution soon.
Okay. With that, I'm going to open this hearing up to the public. Any comments from the public on this order that we're going to consider? Okay, I will now close the hearing, and we can deliberate, and you have an order for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Looks pretty straightforward to me. I would move the adoption of the franchise agreements with the recommendations requirements that have been set, and I would, as part of that motion, move that we adopt Order BCC 201-7-071.
Sir, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Order BCC 2017-071. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next up is the ambulance plan amendment, and that is also a public hearing, so at that time, I will open this for a public hearing, and I am ready for a staff report.
Thank you Commissioners, again Thomas Roberts, and I'm here to discuss with you some changes that have been requested by the state for adoption of our ambulance service area plan. I'd like to note that we received a letter back regarding our plan as adopted from the Oregon Health Authority, EMS and Trauma Systems. I was very pleased with this letter, while it had a couple of minor changes that needed to be made, most of it in language and in definition. The bulk of the plan as written was very well received by the state, and they were very happy. In fact, in talking with one of them, they indicated that they would really like to maybe use our plan as a template moving forward for others to use in their adoption. So I was very happy with that. And Commissioners, I'd also like to point out, I've received a lot of assistance from County Council, as well as from one individual in particular, that's our GIS Coordinator, Tracy Deal, and I would just like to publicly say thank you to her, because she's put a lot of time into this as well, and has done a fantastic job. One of the items that was stated in the letter was that they really liked the maps. They had never seen that good a quality of a service area map before, so I want to make sure that she gets recognition for that. In the letter, it recommended that we make a couple minor changes. To definition, EMT paramedic, that was a mistake there, now referred to exclusively as paramedic, and so we made an adjustment in the plan as such, and have referenced OAR 333-265-0000, number 25 for that. We also had a definition change. Certified first responder is actually now referred to at the state level as emergency medical responder, so we made that change, and also referenced OAR in that new definition. The response times that we had in place for Frontier were a federal time. However, our local area trauma advisory board plan actually has a tighter time, and so they recommended that we adopt the two-hour Frontier response time versus the four-hour and 28 minutes. So we did that, and so now our Frontier response time will reflect that requirement, as well as all of our maps. We had those adjusted accordingly. Mutual aid agreements, we did change some language in regards to mutual aid agreements in the new plan. Some of the strengths that were recognized by the state, excellent narrative description to the ASAs and the GIS maps with response time boundaries, the extra language that was removed, so it wasn't, it was very to the point, good narrative and alternative considerations to reducing response times, including our cost county coverage. We were recognized for an excellent description of the ASA holders' responsibilities for the prearranged interfacility transports. Again, that had to do with the requirement for having a plan input into place so that we can ensure that the quality of service was there for those services. There was clear requirements for the emergency communications and systems access, as well as clear description of who the ASA administrator would be. Before, it was rather unclear, and we defined that as, myself as the emergency manager or any future counterpart. Under the improvements to consider, there were a couple of items that we made some changes to in the plan. We did address the cross-county boundaries into, by La Grande into ASA one, as well as by currently Walla Walla down into ASA six, and we just did that by stating in the plan that they would be responding down into, along Mill Creek Road or Highway 204. The, again, the process for, I'm sorry, the quality, we improved some language there for the county plan for quality improvement, just to make that a little more clear on how we were going to proceed forward and ensure compliance with the plan. And then we also improved some languages in regards to dispatch and how the quality improvement was going to be maintained and monitored on their end of the overall system times. And then the very last one, I actually disagree with because it is an older issue, and that is the Athena Weston ASA five, where they discuss that they're operating under staff restraints and are in need of repetitive mutual aid requests from assisting ASAs. I believe that that has already been addressed through their reorganization, and subsequently, we've been monitoring their response times and their numbers, and I believe that they are well within compliance at this point in time. So I'm going to address that back to the state on that one. So with that, that would cover most of the changes that we are requesting that be made to the ambulance service area plan, and I would request the Board of Commissioners consider adoption of the changes as drafted.
Okay, questions?
Tom, one of the questions, you referred to Union County and Walla Walla County. What's the agreement, and I know we have one, but between Morrow County and that west end of that area one?
We have a multi-agency, multi-county agreement.
Okay.
And so it's all covered under the one mutual aid agreement between Morrow, all the Union and up, so, and we're going to be revising that mutual aid agreement very soon. It's almost due for revision, so we'll be taking a close look at that.
And this really doesn't, not directly related to the ASA, ASA, excuse me, but a question, and I would refer back to our law enforcement folks, specifically Jim. We do have an ongoing law enforcement mutual aid with all three counties, Union, Morrow and Walla Walla. Do we have anything set up with Benton County?
No.
No? Okay. That may be something we could look at in the future.
Okay.
Because they're just across the bridge, so.
Okay, other questions? At this time, I will open this portion of the hearing open to the public. Are there any public comments, or anyone from the public want to have questions? Okay, I am going to close the hearing for deliberation, and we do have an order?
I do.
There are actually two things that the Board will need to adopt, besides, one will be the order and the other will be the actual plan itself.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, I move the, we adopt the revised plan and adopt ordinance 201-7-15.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt order number 201-7-15. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and then the second one.
Okay, that was the revised plan.
That was the revised plan, okay. All right. With that, let's move on. This is a point in time, this is not a public hearing, but we did want public here for comments. This is in relation to the Edwards-Feidville intersection. I know we have some people here that want to make comments, so if you would just start moving forward, and we have some seats up here, so anyone that wants to comment on that?
Yeah, that's hilarious, pictures.
And the process is, when you speak, you introduce yourself and tell us who you are and your address for the record. So either one of you that would like to go first?
My name is Heidi Carver. My address is 78368 North Loop Road in Stanfield. My husband was involved in one of those motor vehicle accidents in September 20th of 2016. I do believe that if there was a four-way intersection put in place there for a stop sign, that that accident would not have happened. I have a neighbor out there that was also involved in a accident in 2014. Both of these accidents that I'm speaking about were fatalities. There were a total of three fatalities, and my husband went into the dash. He's six foot eight, and so therefore, on impact, his knee shattered the dash, and it shattered his tibial plateau. He is still dealing with injuries from that accident. They're going to be lifelong, and I have been in contact with the family that the fatality was, occurred, and that family, since the passing of the mother, has basically dissolved. They have family issues. The other passenger in the accident was critically injured. He was lifelighted to the Portland area in an ICU for 10 days. He is on medications for depression. There was an accident there on the 9th of November. That little gal, to my knowledge, is still in the hospital with very bad injuries, a shattered pelvis. They took out an ovary, they took out her spleen, and there again, if any of these accidents, there was a four-way stop, it wouldn't have happened, because the odds of two parties running the same stop sign at the same time is pretty slim. I have an email from EMS of the list of accidents. There have been 11 accidents there in two years. Nine of the 11 are with injuries, multiple extrications, and I know myself, and I know Angie, we all have young kids that are starting to drive, and I just feel that if that intersection was a four-way stop, you would decrease drastically the number of accidents that are there. And putting in a flashing light, I mean, you're, it's a high-speed road, so therefore, having the cross, the people crossing, if there's an accident there, it's going to be a high-speed collision. It's going to be, odds are, a fatality or serious injuries. I know that they put a stop sign in at Co. and Edwards after the fatality of, I believe it was the building inspector's wife. There has not been an accident at that intersection since that time. So I guess that's really what I have to say, is that I'm not sure why there has not been changes made to that intersection as of yet. My husband and I are willing to pay for the signs to be put in, whatever we need to do, but that's a very dangerous intersection.
Heidi, thank you.
Hi, my name's Angie Connell. I live at 78748 Calhoun Lane, Stanfield, Oregon. That's all you need to know, right? Okay. So I, after the last accident, not the last one that just happened, but Heidi's Dusty's, I remember calling and asking what needed to be done to have a four-way put in. They said it was going to be in, you know, in the works, it was a process, there was a lot that needed to be done to put a four-way in. Okay, so I get that there, well, actually I don't, I'm very confused. I don't understand why it's such a process. There's been three fatalities there in a matter of three years, two years.
Three years.
Three years, in a matter of three years. I have teenage kids that drive up and down that road. I have a son who's going to be 16 here soon. The boy that hit the girl on November 9th is a 16-year-old boy who lives behind me. So this kid, I was actually, the girl that came to the stop sign, the 19-year-old that came, she stopped at that stop sign because she stopped for my son and I. So she stopped, and then I don't know if she's, why she sat there, but she did, because I kept looking in my rearview mirror. See, that intersection is something that we, that live out there, we try to pay attention. So we try to slow down, we try to pay attention that people are going to run it, because they run it all the time. But you're not understanding is that these accidents aren't just from people running the stop sign. It's people that do stop. This gal here stopped, I kept watching my rearview mirror. She had sat there until I was all the way down in that picture. I was all the way down to 395, and I could not see her no longer, but she was still, until I was within over a mile out of sight, I could still see her sitting at the stop sign. So she was there for a very long time, and she was the one that got hit. There's also some obstruction. I don't know if you guys have actually been to this four-way, or to this two-way stop and looked. It's kind of hard to see at times when you come to that stop sign, so I don't know if maybe she didn't see Jarrett come and that he was coming from the left. I don't know, but I do know that if there was a four-way, he would have slowed up to stop. That accident either would not have happened at all, or it would have been minor injuries. It wouldn't have been a girl being lifelighted. The severity wouldn't have been there. That's all, that's all all of us are trying to say, is that the severity of the accidents would be less if there was a four-way. And I guess we're just very confused as to why it is so difficult to get a four-way there. We're just asking for two more stop signs for the safety of everybody that lives out there. I guess, but we just have a lot of confusion as to the, why, why there can be four-ways put in other areas, because the one on Co., it was right after the accident. As soon as there was a fatality there, the city of Stanfield put a four-way up right away. We had three, and still nothing. And a bigger stop sign didn't help. Flashing lights are not going to help. The only thing that's going to help is if you slow traffic down. And the only way to do that, you can lower the speed on that highway, but there's, on that road, but they're still not probably going to slow down. A four-way stop will make people at least, even the ones that blow through, like Heidi said, what are the odds of two people blowing through the stop sign at the same time? It's pretty slim. And I just think, I just think life probably should be a little bit more of an importance here than whatever's stopping the four-way from going in, which I'm not sure what that is.
Just a question. Your observation of the other car, was that the date of the accident, or was that another case?
No, it was that girl, she got in the wreck.
Thank you.
Amber, thank you. You're, both of you had questions. Why does it take so much to put a stop sign in? There are all kinds of regulations and all kinds of laws relating to even what the county can do on putting a sign up, any type of a regulatory sign, whether it's speed, whether it's stop sign. But I'm going to ask Tom Fellowes, our Public Works Director, if he would come up. I hate putting him on the, I hate putting him on the spot, but Tom has some pretty good information on what has been done. I would tend to, I guess I would tend to agree, if everybody has to stop, then it's going to slow some things down. None of us, you, the Commissioners, or anyone in this room, has any, we can never figure out why somebody thinks they have to blow a stop sign, or drive 75 on a road that's posted 50. We're in an age of multitasking and being in a hurry, and, but that doesn't stop somebody from being negligent, or somebody having their mind on something else, or maybe being on a foggy highway. I've lost family members in traffic accidents because of fog, and maybe negligence too. But anyway, I get it, I understand. Tom?
Tom Fellowes, Yumattila County Public Works. Actually, what I
Actually, what I came most prepared for was the commissioners had asked me to put together some cost estimates on different applications for the intersection, and I'll get into some of these other questions in a bit, but I'd like to start there. Some of the, some of the questions about different applications were flashing lights, flashing beacons in the middle of the intersection, which would flash all four ways, the red and yellow, and these would be hooked into the power grid, so they would be hooked into Umatilla Electric. The total cost of that, the hardware is going to run about twenty-five hundred dollars. The actual installation, because you have to use licensed electricians and whatnot, is going to be up around three thousand. So we're looking into the five to six thousand dollar range for flashing lights at the intersection. I was also asked about single flashing signals on top of the signposts, just a single beacon on top of the signposts. Those are primarily solar-powered. You can get them the other way, but the recommendation from ODOT is to go with the solar ones. Those run twenty-five hundred dollars a pair. So if we're looking at two directions, we'd be looking about five thousand dollars for those.
Each direction?
Five thousand dollars total. So you'd, a pair. A pair would be two in this direction and then two in this direction, because you'd have them on.
Five thousand a pair.
Right. They would, and these would go on top of the stop ahead post, not the actual stop sign, so that it would be a pre-warning that, to them that be aware. And on the other side, they would go, there's actually an intersection post, and these posts are approximately five hundred feet from the intersection, so it would essentially be another level of warning, five hundred feet prior to the intersection. The actual stop signs, if you made that a four-way stop, that is by far the least expensive, and the signs, the posts, the installation on those are going to be about a thousand dollars. So that, and then, quite frankly, the most, most safe application for that intersection would be roundabout. National studies are very clear about this. Roundabouts not only save lives, they make extremely minor collisions out of what normally would be, normally would be bad collisions. The downside is a roundabout adequate enough for farm equipment movement through that intersection is going to be in the neighborhood of a million dollars. But that would be the, by far, the best. So we, my staff actually did some more traffic counts out there last week, and I, they weren't, there wasn't enough time to put together a full report on it, so I went through this morning and basically tried to pick the data as best as I could and get some numbers. The traffic numbers for those, for that intersection are relatively low in the entire scheme of things. The highest, highest number is going to be on the Edwards side, and Edwards on each side of the intersection runs about twelve hundred cars per day. The MUTCD doesn't even, hardly recognize numbers that low.
Would you explain to folks?
MUTCD is the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and the MUTCD is the standard that the majority of the nation operates under. There are counties and cities that don't utilize the MUTCD. They write their own standards, but by far, that is, that is pretty much the standard of the nation. So, and that's what we, what we try to operate all of our signage under in the county. So, in fact, they, an intersection with under eight hundred cars per hour doesn't hardly, hardly rate, because it, the other interesting fact about that is, and I don't know that I totally agree with that, but anything under five accidents in a six-month period don't, doesn't, doesn't rise to the standards of doing a great deal of increased changes to an intersection. So I mean, that's, I don't have to agree with it. That's just, that's just the standard that we work under. Some of the interesting things I found was the maximum speed, five hundred feet from the intersection, we actually had speeds at ninety miles an hour clocked last Thursday in a twenty-four-hour period. Twenty-five percent of the traffic, either approaching or leaving the stop sign, was in excess of fifty miles an hour at five hundred feet from the stop sign. So it's, I agree, we have a dangerous intersection, but it's, but we also have a behavioral problem. We need, we need to figure out how to change behavior of the drivers out there in that vicinity. And on the Feidville side, the maximum speed there was actually eighty-seven, which the side with no stop sign had a, had a lower speed at five hundred feet from the intersection than the side with a stop sign. So I go, that one didn't, and fifty-five percent was going over fifty miles an hour with fifteen percent over sixty miles an hour. So, so, you know, there are some definite issues there that I would associate with behavioral issues that certainly need to be addressed, along with possibly doing some other applications out there.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
So you're giving numbers of the amount of traffic out on Feidville and Edwards, and you're stating that the state standards are saying that we don't need any adjustment there?
I'm, what I'm stating is that what is currently there actually exceeds the current standards. I'm not stating, I'm not saying anything about that I disagree or agree with the fact that more can be done. Certainly, there's always more that can be done. I'm simply referring to the fact that we have already exceeded, you know, what we really, what we need to.
So that intersection is the only intersection in the area that does not have a four-way stop?
Yep.
Edwards and Co. has a four-way stop. Despain, Goldschlup, and Feidville has a four-way stop. First Street in Feidville has a four-way stop. Edwards and Co. has a four-way stop. What makes Feidville and Edwards such a special intersection that we can't, because all the traffic counts are going to be very similar out there? What's this, what's the story? Who's fighting this?
Actually, it isn't a matter of anybody fighting it, and I can only address the Co. Edwards intersection, because I, that's happened since I've been here. And quite honestly, that intersection did not meet the level of standards in the MUTCD. The city of Stanfield came before the board and actually pressed, pressed the board, and the board agreed to go ahead and put a four-way stop there, as they can. They are the road authority. They can, they can certainly do that. Alls I'm saying is, it did, it did not meet the standards either. The other intersections over the years, my suspicion is, is they probably didn't meet standards. They, it was, those were probably also more tuned towards political pressure. And I'm not, I'm not supporting it. I'm not, I'm only telling you, I'm trying to answer your question.
I'm working on getting statistics from the Umatilla County Fire Department of how many accidents have happened at those intersections of four-way stops. I'm working on that as of speak.
Heidi, Heidi, you'd sent a lot of information, and I've looked through that. Tom, of course, has to follow what those standards are. Board of Commissioners has the authority to do this. We do have people that don't feel, as you well know, don't feel we should have a stop sign on Edwards Road.
Do I have to?
That's, that's beside the point.
Actually, I don't even know who, but I'd like to know what their argument is for against it.
I, I think they've always felt it was a through road, and people don't want to stop.
Will they stop at Feidville and?
That's true. That, I'm just trying to explain this.
I understand, I understand.
So with that being said, I have driven that road numerous times, and to give you an example, and this pretty much explains your issues too, I had a meeting early yesterday morning with EOTC. So I went out and I spent probably an hour driving back and forth through that intersection all the different directions. In the time I was there, I had one person blow by me and run the stop sign on Edwards. I had a number of trucks go through that intersection, I'm assuming probably exceeding the speed limit on that, on Feidville Road. The other issue, and we had a deputy out there patrolling at that same time, because I met him also. As I left the intersection going north, had a car go by me exceeding the speed limit. I met it, and as I'm looking in my mirror, it went fast enough, I couldn't even tell whether it was a Oregon license or Washington license. That car went through the speed, went through the stop sign. So yes, we recognize there's a problem. We're going to do something to try and solve this. But I wanted you to hear some of the information. Our Public Works could probably explain some of the regulations better than I could, because he deals with it every day. So there's no way we're saying that, no, there's not a problem. We know there's a problem, and trying to figure out a way to deal with this is what we're trying to do today.
Obviously, a stop sign is by far the most economical, and if you end up having a person going ninety miles an hour and a person going eighty-seven miles an hour, that's one hell of a collision.
That's correct.
And we have studies stating that that is the speed that's traveled out there, and you can, you can put a police officer out there and patrol it, but I'll tell you what, the second that they're not out there, the speeds are going to go just like they are now.
And to my point, there was a county deputy out there yesterday morning, had just left the intersection, not a half a mile ahead, when I left, and that car, the second car went through there.
I believe after Dusty's accident, they did a study, and it was like ten cars a day run that stop sign. That's.
Yeah, we had, you're correct. We had, we had documentation that showed that there was at least ten a day that couldn't have possibly stopped at the stop sign because of the speeds they were achieving at the intersection.
And for us that we live out there, I mean, you do, you, we drive that intersection probably between the two of us, ten to twelve times a day between our family, with going in and out of town to grab kids, in and out of town to work, and you don't know when somebody's going to stop out there, because the speeds are so fast that they, I mean, they come up to that stop sign, and I, half the time, I don't know how they get stopped because it's so fast.
I spoke, I went out to the scene of the last accident and spoke with Under Sheriff Littlefield and Deputy Roberts, who both are here today. And Deputy Roberts said that he patrols it on a regular basis. When he's there, the sight of a cruiser will slow things down. Unfortunately, we don't have enough personnel or enough cruisers to be able to put one out there all the time. That would be the most effective, perhaps. And I'm speaking for Deputy Roberts, but he said also, he'd been out there at night. And he says he catches one or two every time he's out there. Daytimes are difficult times. This last accident, when I was out there, it was in the morning. It was a very gray morning. The pickup that was coming from the east was light gray in color. Would have been very easy to miss. So I think what we're here today to do is to consider what the options are. I know Einstein said, if you continue doing the same thing and expect different results, you're probably insane. And so I think we need to probably take a look at what we can do out there.
Tom, any other comments? Okay. Sheriff's Department, any comments? And I'm assuming Deputy Roberts, you were the one I saw yesterday.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I still have time for the officers.
Okay.
If you did, it was happening.
Morning, Jim Littlefield, Umatilla County Under Sheriff. Certainly agree with all the comments today. You know, we do have lots of crashes there. We also have lots of traffic stops, and we ran data for, over the last three years or so, and, you know, we've made at least seventy traffic stops out there in addition to the crashes. We know it's a dangerous intersection, and in the best conditions, as it shows here with full daylight, sunny, it's still a dangerous intersection when you, you know, you change the conditions, whether it's bad weather, dark, raining, snowing, it's more dangerous. So, you know, in general, crashes that law enforcement covers, us and Oregon State Police, you ask any officer, you know, they dread going through these high-speed crashes because they see many things that, that most people don't want to see as far as injuries to people. And we, we encourage, you know, us and the county to do as much as we can to address this. We would certainly support a four-way or in addition to any other signage or lights or anything to help people be aware that there's a stop sign approaching. We know that nowadays with people distracted driving, you may have stop signs posted there, but if somebody's not paying attention to the road, and/or they may be from out of the area, they may not necessarily know there's a stop sign coming if they're not paying attention. So, you know, some sort of warning prior to the stop signs to get their attention to the stop signs would also make sense, I think. And so, in short, we support any, anything to make the intersection more safe. We don't like responding to those crashes. Many times, there are people that, you know, from the area that we know, and, and so we just want to be, make sure that it's a safer intersection for everybody that goes through, whether they're from here or from, from out of the area.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Is it possible those people coming to the stop sign that are blowing through, you know, that they're thinking because they see such a long stretch of road, that there's no cars coming? They're thinking that they can slow up a little bit. There's nothing coming, so they just blow through. But there's a blind spot, right, that they don't realize where those cars are. They could be, so even putting a flashing light, those people that are going to blow through them are probably still going to blow through them. They're going to slow, think that they can see far enough out.
Right.
That it's clear, and so it's too late. That's not clear.
I know we talked about before about the rumble strips on the road, either recessed or raised above the road, that would give somebody an indication physically that there's something coming up. That may be another option as well to get them to know that there's a stop sign near.
One of the things that I did notice yesterday, as I was on Edwards Road, traveling south toward Stanfield, I noticed coming from the east on Feidville, a truck with a boom on it that is used to pull pumps. As that truck approached the intersection, it dropped out of sight.
Down there.
And so as you look both directions, you can assume, if you look to the right, to the west down Feidville, you have a fairly good view. But looking to the east, if you're in a hurry, you're going to assume that nothing's coming because you looked, you wouldn't see anything, even the truck. The only thing that I saw was just a little tiny piece of the top of that mast, and of course, it was laying down over the cab. But if you looked quickly, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have seen it. And that truck, as it went through that intersection, was. And that truck, as it went through that intersection, was obviously in quite a hurry. So.
The pictures don't really show, but there is a little rise as you speak of going, looking to the east. It's slight, but it still somewhat impairs your vision, so that is a contributing factor as well. And sometimes drivers, especially younger drivers, have a problem judging speed and distance. They don't realize how, how fast the car's coming or how soon it's going to get to that intersection. You have to be a more experienced driver, you know, to, to realize it, things are coming quicker than they are. And so again, what they, we've talked about with the four ways. At the other locations, we have very few crashes, and the ones that we do have are usually very low speed, minor injury, so.
But I did notice both sides of Edwards, the stop signs are very visible. So they're there.
Sure.
You'd have to be, you talked about young drivers, I'm almost afraid to bring this up, but also elderly drivers don't have as good of eyesight sometimes, not all of us.
Or reaction.
How'd that work for you yesterday? But the reality is elderly drivers, I know we've had an accident there that involves some older folks too. So, yeah, it's an issue.
Certainly having adequate signage and making people aware that there are signs approaching is probably the best approach for us, so. Thank you.
A question, Tom Fellows, could you speak to the matter of rumble strips?
There are, there are a number of issues with rumble strips, but the actual rumble strip itself, which is cut into the asphalt in, in this application, would work fine except for the fact our asphalt structure won't stand it. We'd have to completely repave and, and get a deep enough profile on the asphalt for, for those to be ground into the pavement. The raised rumble strips or speed bumps, as most people refer to them as, one of the concerns that has come out of some studies that were done and I, there's a doctor in Portland, for Portland State, that puts on a lot of safety seminars and they, the issue with that is if you put in an obstruction and somebody hits it and, and that causes them to fly off or to have an issue, either an accident or, or something negative, then what that does is that puts the county in a bit of a liability problem because we've created a man-made obstacle. So it's, you know, it's, it, you're, it's a tough call. So, but the, but the actual cut-in rumble strips, unless we completely repave the intersection, would be difficult if not impossible.
Thank you.
Okay, other, Tom.
Tom Roberts, County Emergency Manager. I'd just like to point out two quick items for consideration here. First off, less than a year ago, Fire District Number One started staffing Station 22 off of Diagonal Road full-time with a paramedic. And while, while the paramedic unit response time to this location is going to be substantially shorter than it would have been from the main station in Hermiston, the, the issue to be considered here is that also makes the South Edwards Stretch a primary route for that medic unit responding to incidents in the Stanfield-Necco area. That is the same route that Commissioner Givens is discussing with the blind spot. And if you have somebody traveling along that section heading east to west at a high rate of speed and, and they don't see each other, we'd stand a higher potential of having an incident involving a medic unit as well. And so I want that to be applied in your consideration. I also would like for you to consider the fact that the cost of placing signage, the cost of rumble strips, the cost of even additional paving to support rumble strips or lighting. Taking the cost of the human equation out of it is going to be nothing compared to what we're going to see if we continue to have to run increased patrols, if we have to continue to respond with multiple rescue and EMS units and to include aerial assets such as life flight. So when you take the cost equation into, into consideration here as well, I think what, what's being asked of the commission for revamping this intersection is, is going to be the lesser of those, of those options. So, thank you.
Tom, thanks for the comment. You can't put a cost on human life loss.
Exactly.
Or even a human.
Exactly.
Lifetime injury.
Yeah, totally agreed. And that's why I'm saying if you take that element out of it, you're still looking at the lesser of the expenses by, by looking at upgrades, so.
Right. Other comments?
Are you to Commissioner comment yet?
We're getting there. I want to be sure folks have a chance to talk and speak to this. And the reason I'm taking a little extra time here was simply because I want people to have a voice in this. So with that, okay, Commissioners?
I think one of the things I'd like to point out clearly is that at no, this is a thing we've talked about for several years, and at no point has a consideration ever been cost. Another thing I'd like to point out is that there are probably several thousand intersections in Umatilla County, and we ask our Director of Public Works to rely on industry standards in making his decisions, so therefore it falls to the Commissioners to exceed those standards. It isn't, I don't think would be right to ask Tom to, to make those kinds of decisions. So it's, it's up to us to exceed those industry standards, many of which are predicated by, by situations in other parts of the country. And one of the things that, that we have always prided ourselves in in eastern Oregon is that we are unique and, and I think as Commissioners, it's incumbent on us to, to respond to what we perceive to be local circumstances. I know a number of the people who live in that area, I know very well people who were involved in serious accidents at that intersection. It's, it's unique, it's remote, and I know how fast people drive there. My own family lived at the other end of the road. Therefore, I think this is an instance where perhaps we need to go, consider going beyond what are industry standards and, and acknowledge that this is a serious, serious situation at that intersection. When we first discussed it, I know we talked about the idea of an overhead light. I was happy to hear from our Director of Public Works that power is available to an overhead light because I would personally favor an overhead light, but I think also I would, I would favor a four-way stop combined with an overhead light.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I drive the route many times a week. It's my route of preference, coming from my home in Hermiston, east of Hermiston, to coming to the courthouse, so I'm very familiar with the intersection. Personally, when I stop at the intersection, I not only look, I look twice to make sure there isn't any traffic coming. It's a, it's a difficult intersection. And earlier I said what the definition of insanity is, and I stand by that. I think we must do something there different to get a different result. And I would, I would be favorable to a four-way stop with flashing beacon lights on the, on the approach warnings so that we give as much warning as we possibly could. My take on it, if I got the numbers right, would be 5,000 for the flashing lights and $1,000 for the stop sign. That's a very small cost to pay. I know that by taking this position, there'll be some people who really don't agree with it. I know people out on Feedville Road who want it to remain open and remain a two-way stop, and they are not going to be happy if we change that. People who have lost lives there, their loved ones aren't happy either with the way it is. So I guess we have to take what we think is the best approach, and that would be my suggestion.
Okay. When we make a change on our, our road, we end up, it's required we have a public hearing, is it not Doug? We don't have to. Okay, so this would suffice. Do we have any kind of an order that?
For a four-way stop?
For a four-way stop. Okay, so you have some different ones that?
I have one prepared for just a four-way stop, and you can always add additional things if you want. But at this point, there are two different proposals, so I'm not sure.
Three.
Oh, there's a lot.
Well, we have a proposal for a four-way stop, we have a proposal for an overhead light, and we have a proposal for approach lights.
And flashing stop signs.
Well, that hasn't been proposed yet.
Rumble strips, lots of different options to go there. Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Chair, I move that the intersection at Edwards and Feedville be regulated with stop signs on all four approaches, and that the single flashing alert be mounted on the posts approaching the stop signs.
I want a second half of that. Can we do the, can we do the first half first?
Sure.
Then I would second, I would second the four-way stop.
Then my motion that we create a four-way stop at Edwards and Feedville.
And I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we create a four-way stop at Edwards and Feedville. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to read that order?
Yeah, the order number is RD 2017-07.
Okay, so it would be 2017-07 for that, so, and it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, I'm not sure if either one of us are qualified to sit here and say, okay, approach lights are better than an overhead light. Perhaps we could have a motion that our, our law enforcement authorities and our, our Public Works Director come back with additional information about the merits of either.
Is, is that a motion?
It was a motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and we put Jim and his crew on notice that they've got work to do.
And Tom.
And Tom, to consider what type of additional lighting, either overhead or.
Mounted on the posts.
Mounted on the post or both will be adequate or would increase the likelihood to stop more serious, well, stop.
Actually, my motion wasn't for both, it was for one or the other.
Okay.
To consider, to get together the data together so that we can make a decision on.
On which, which of the two options is best.
Yes.
But it will be one of them.
I agree.
Okay. Other comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Yes, Tom?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
The only thing I would like to comment on, on this is we don't stock all of the, the signs and the hardware, so don't expect to see this Monday morning out there because it's not going to happen that quick. We have.
But stop anyway.
We have to order these things, and so it's, so, you know, I just, I don't want people to get the idea that, that we're going to work overtime this weekend and get that done. It will happen, I just don't, I don't want any false folks out there.
Let's pray, let us pray that there's not going to be an accident in the meantime.
Right, right.
Okay, ladies, thank you. Budget Committee appointments, Doug?
Okay. Do you want me to do it, Doug?
Sure.
Due to the fact that Jerry Baker is term limited, it's been necessary for us to identify a replacement for Jerry on our Budget Committee. We certainly want to commend him for his service, and we like to have representation from throughout the county. So the proposal, BCC 2017-070 is to appoint Beth O'Handlon, who is the Chief Fiscal Officer of the Umatilla Marl, excuse me, the Intermountain ESD, to, to take his place, and I would so move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the replacement for our Budget Committee of Jerry Baker, be Beth O'Handlon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. The FSAC letter, Nolan Hills Wind Energy, excuse me, facility?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Bob Walder, Planning Director. So the request before you this morning is for ratification of a November 6 letter that was sent to the Department of Energy in response to the notice of intent for the Nolan Hills Wind Project. As you know, this proposed project is a 350-megawatt wind project located southeast of Echo. Because of its size, 350 megawatts, the application will be processed as a FSAC project to the Department of Energy. As a reviewing agency, we are asked to submit substantive criteria that would be required as if Umatilla County was accepting the application. So in this letter, I've gone through and addressed items from our comprehensive plan as well as our development code that would be required if they were to submit an application to us. And this information will be used in the next phase of the project as the applicant makes their preliminary application to FSAC, which that application is expected later this winter, early spring.
Okay.
Are there any questions about the letter or the project?
Did, real quickly, was county listed as a, I forget the term, we've done this every year.
Essentially, we're a cooperating agency.
Cooperating agency.
Yeah.
Review Committee.
Yeah, a reviewing agency. And I've participated in the preliminary calls that we've had on this project, and will continue to be involved and keep you guys apprised of any developments.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the letter.
Do I have a conflict?
How many of the towers do you own?
Well, we've been trying to keep you separated from this project.
Okay, then I'll stay separated.
Okay, and I will second that motion. And do you want to abstain?
Yes.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed and those abstaining?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, the Lloyd Road engineering cost.
Tom Fellows, Public Works, again. As, as the board may remember, they approved to move forward with the LID down on Lloyd Road, and in that, we needed to get the cost for, a cost estimate done for the total project so that these people can make a judgment on whether they, they want to go ahead and move forward. Due to staffing and, and time constraints, the Public Works Department elected to have independent consultant do this estimate. So we reached out to Anderson Perry, who we have on contract for such services, and they gave me a quote of $5,400. And so at this point, I'm just before the board to get approval to pay them $5,400 so that we can get this estimate and move forward.
You know, we already approved this once before to do this. Only reason it's before us, again, is it's $400 over the, the limit, which, since it was already approved once, I'm surprised we have to go through this, but as it is.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
Veteran Services vehicle purchase. Who has that?
I guess I will then. There's anyone from, that's okay, from the department here. So this, previously, the, a board authorized a request for proposal to go out for three vehicles for the Veteran Services. a request for proposal to go out for three vehicles for the Veteran Services Division. It was for a new or slightly-used vehicle. There were five proposals received, and the Department is recommending to go with the lowest one, which is a 2018 Ford Fusion for $17,900 from Tom Densel Ford.
I thought it interesting that we also had a bid on a 2017 for more money, it must have been more elaborately equipped. Mr. Chair, move approval of the purchase of three 2018 Ford Fusions, $17,900 each from Tom Densel Ford.
Second. Been moved and seconded, that Tom Densel Ford is the little bidder awarding that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Law enforcement vehicle purchase.
Morning. Dave Williamson with the Sheriff's Office. This is the follow-up to a previous request where we went out for bids for three of the Ford Explorer Police Interceptor packages. We received, when we, this went out for bids, we received two, of which Gresham Ford came in just a hair under Densel, so we're requesting to purchase the three vehicles through Gresham Ford.
Questions?
Captain Williamson, I didn't see the estimate, the bid from Gresham Ford.
I have a copy of it here if you'd like.
I'd like. The, reviewing the initial bids, it appears that Tom Densel Ford would have been the low bidder at $31,800.
That amount?
$31,930.
Was lower, but it was incomplete. We had requested that they include full vehicle tending aftermarket, which they did not do, they only gave us a quote for the front two windows.
Can you speak to the necessity of it?
The factory tending is almost nonexistent, the first year we ordered them, they came in, I called the dealer because I thought they'd left out the tending, there were, there barely any tending at all. Due to the heat, due to the transporter prisoners, transport of other persons that require privacy, we like to have a darker tint on the back windows.
And did Densel Ford say they could not do that?
No, they just didn't include it, they said that factory tending was available, which we were aware, but it's insufficient, but they declined to give us a further quote on it.
Would you speak to the safety of the tending?
The safety of the tending?
Yes. Not the process, but the safety of Ford to officers and occupants in the vehicle.
Oh, it discourages people from viewing inside the car, it shields the officer from view, the prisoners from view. Occasionally, we'll have witnesses that we're taking back and forth to places, it keeps our equipment out of view, it's just generally something we like to have.
And when it's purchased from a company like Gresham Ford, do they deliver it, do we have to go pick up?
They deliver it, and that's at no cost.
Any other comments or questions?
Was the dark tinting on all windows on the bid specifications?
Yes.
It was requested.
Sure it was.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded, that we accept the Gresham Ford proposal, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The UTV purchase, or, oh, Jim's doing it, yeah.
He's kind of earning his way today.
Pardon?
He's kind of earning his way today.
Pardon?
I said, you're earning your way today, all kinds of things.
We're here to follow up on the bids that we requested and eventually received for the purchase of a UTV, Utility Task Vehicle, which will be used primarily to enhance our snowmobile program, which we patrol. We eventually, we had it open twice, first time we didn't receive any bids, we opened it again. Received two bids from two different vendors that are both local, Moro County Grain Growers, which you see here, quoted us in the vehicle that meets our needs at the cost you see. We received one other from a local vendor for a vehicle that did not meet specs, was smaller in both engine size and capacity, that other quote came in at over $29,000, and so Moro County Grain Growers gave us some prices on several different vehicles, they discounted all the vehicles significantly, and came up with this cost here. The funding comes from the Sheriff's Snowmobile Program, which is, has grant funds sufficient to cover the costs. We are anticipating some more grant funds that will come in by the end of the year, which will somewhat replenish the fund, and this cost here does not deplete the fund at all.
Question, the choice of the bids is a six-passenger.
Yes.
And comes at an additional cost of $1,000 for each of those two additional passengers?
I suppose.
What's the, what frequency would, how would you use this with six people? What would you use for...
In the event that we would have to do, we, can you also use the vehicle for search and rescue purposes? So in the event that we have to carry more personnel into a location that we can't get to with other vehicles, we would be able to carry more personnel, more searchers per se, more equipment, so a six-passenger would meet those needs.
And on the bid summaries, it indicates two of the, two of the bids as being non-responsive, what does that mean?
Non-responsive, I don't understand.
Okay, it means that they didn't have some of the specs, so like the one that they bid didn't have the air conditioning that they requested, and the other one didn't have a large enough engine.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded, we approve the purchase of the XP 1000 Crew from Moro County at the cost of $32,878. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. I guess I'll stay here, I think I have the next one as well.
Decontamination trailer?
Yes, so we have currently on our campus a 1998, I believe, decontamination trailer was used in the CSEP days, it's basically a showering unit, and there were two, I believe, that were in our county from the CSEP program. One, the county transferred in 2011 to Hermiston Fire, currently Yuma Tilla County Fire, and so during the Eagle Creek fires this year, we received a request from Chief Stanton, who was part of Hermiston Fire as well, to donate the trailer to Northwest Incident Management Team Six, which were managing the fire down in the gorge, and at that time, they requested the trailer, they wanted to repurpose it, they wanted to convert it from a showering trailer to a command post, and so they asked if we would be able to donate the trailer. Currently, it sits in our lot and has for as many years as I've been here without being moved, it's deteriorating, we've asked local agencies, including fire agencies, Forest Service, and whomever we could think of if they wanted or needed the trailer for their purposes, and have had no response from anybody, not, nobody's interested in the trailer. Hermiston Fire liquidated theirs a few years ago, I spoke with Captain Phillips, who since retired from Hermiston Fire, and they liquidated theirs, I'm not sure how much they got, I want to say under $5,000 that they either sold or exchanged for the trailer to some other party, and so we, having no use for it, think it can be better served for Northwest Incident Management Team Six, who does regional fires, I think Mr. Sheldon from Northwest Incident Management submitted a letter explaining what they wanted to do with it, I think it's attached here, Doug, and so they have a need, they can put it to good use, we cannot, and so we're requesting that they, we donate the trailer to them for their purposes.
We not long ago purchased or retrofitted one of our vehicles for a command, is that correct?
Yes.
Could we have ever used that for that, or could we use it in the future?
No, this particular one, I don't know that we have a vehicle large enough to pull it, for one thing, it's a very large trailer, 27 to 30-foot long, fifth-wheel, triple-axle, it's not something that we could use, and if we, if we were to use it, we would have a lot of expense in changing it over from a shower unit to something that we could use, much more than the cost of the trailer itself, so we don't have a use.
Okay.
Looks like it would have made a great cavil hauler for Mr. Murdock.
Well, you could wash the animals without even taking them out of the trailer.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the donation.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Here's a wellness fundraising, who is doing this?
Could I take a moment of personal privilege here as Mr. Sessor approaches and note that Alicia Southwick is with us this morning? We did recognitions earlier, I think I'd be remiss in not noting, that she just finished her master's degree from Washington State University in the Tri-Cities, and successfully defended her project, and I believe had some academic distinction in so doing, and so it's exciting to have you do that, Alicia. And she probably will throttle me afterwards for having noted it.
Mr. Sessor.
Such a great academic institution, too. I tried to be modest about that.
Buttering up the Commissioners prior to our request.
I'm Jim Sessor, I'm from the Yuma Tilla County Health Department. As part of our overall modernization efforts and strategic shift to move away from strictly providing services to individuals to working on creating a healthy environment at the community level, in the coming year, one of our major efforts will be the Year of Wellness, which will be a series of month-to-month themes and activities around healthy activities that we want to promote and that we want to engage community partners in, in our general efforts to make Yuma Tilla County a place where it's easy to be healthy. And this will create a lot of community outreach, it will require a lot of messaging through media and other channels, it will benefit greatly from active participation of community members and community partners, and community partners outside the, what we would consider in the health sector, the usual suspects, not just the hospitals and the clinics, but also other businesses and institutions who have a role in and a vested interest in making Yuma Tilla County a healthier place. We're aware of, there are some county regulations or limitations on county personnel soliciting donations, and we wanted just to bring this before the Commissioners to say that as part of our efforts to develop these activities and themes, we will need to raise some money, we want to do this in collaboration with our community partners, and we just want to have approval to solicit support, either in-kind or cash, donations from some of these partners, specifically to support the Year of Wellness activities, and so it's sort of a very targeted request.
I think when we talked about this, it's more, it's not exactly like bake sales or car washes, it's more on the order of grants from institutions with a vested interest in wellness, is that correct?
Yes, and principally, but not limited to cash donations. We don't have an overall budget for this yet, but I think we're probably going to end up trying to raise maybe $20,000 to $25,000, and these will be to support the activities where, that we're going to be participating in and supporting.
It was highly successful in Telomack County when they did it, and there's, because we have a home there, there's still residual benefits that have fallen out even, even though the Year of Wellness is over, and I think there's maybe other counties, too.
Yeah, I think it's an exciting activity, it's an exciting initiative, it's something that, not all of our partners will be involved in all of this sort of monthly activities or themes, so it'll allow us to broaden the partnership through some of these activities.
And it is a, excuse me, it is a county project versus a personal project where I think the primary thrust of the personnel issue there was going desk to desk to gather a collection from other people in the county, this being a county project, it's merely seeking support of that.
On, in support of these activities, absolutely, and limited to such, yes, sir.
Do we have a resolution or a motion, Counsel?
It's just based on the, just a motion would be fine.
So I so move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thanks very much.
Oh, Nurse Ratchet will be thrilled.
All right. Okay, Doug, the personnel policy.
Well, I think the Human Resources Director is here to...
Jennifer.
Jennifer Blake, Human Resources Director. Before you is a new proposed policy, 3.16, it's regarding service animals in county properties. The crux of this is that during this time where we have more and more people using service animals to help with their ADA disabilities, this helps better to find animals, specifically dogs in this case, in county facilities. This is very timely, according to our insurance company, CIS, they're getting ready to put together a training on this, and actually have reviewed this policy and asked to use some of it in their training, as well as some of the examples of obstacles that we have faced. This has also been vetted through each of our bargaining units, and it comes before you for approval.
Could we scroll down just a little bit on that one? No, up to the top. The copy I had here said in paragraph two that we were going to alter individuals, and I think it meant alert.
And it still says alerting.
It said alter.
Oh, I'm just looking behind here, but yeah, it has been changed.
It's been changed.
Yes.
And down in the, in the first bullet point, looks like we have a redundancy there. Under no circumstances will the county allow the employee to leave the service animal to be left outside, isn't that a redundancy?
Under no...
One or the other of those would have sufficed.
Or in a vehicle.
Allow the employee to leave the service animal to be left outside or in a vehicle?
Oh, I see, to leave the service animal outside or in a vehicle?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll make that change on the final version.
Great.
Okay, other comments or questions?
Move approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded, we approve the new service animal policy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Robert, you've waited so patiently clear through all of this, our budget hearing, supplemental budget hearing.
All those orders that we have here?
Morning Commissioners, Robert Paul, CFO. This morning, we have one supplemental budget before you, supplemental budget appeared I believe I have the wrong one, Doug, can I?
Need this one?
Yeah.
Or better, maybe this one, this is an extra copy. If I can get them up hard.
The supplemental budget appeared in the Estoragonian on November 15 for consideration today, it's Budget Order 2018-10. It's for the Human Services Fund, specifically Mental Health Administration. The Mental Health Administration program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenues of $108,538, and an increase in materials and services of $108,538.
Questions?
No, I have none. Okay, I am ready for a motion.
This is a budget, supplemental budget?
Oh, I'm sorry. So thank you for the staff report. The hearing is open. And with the opening, the hearing, all of our audience left. So since there is no one here for public comment. Any other questions from my colleagues? Hearing none. I'll close the hearing. All those ready to present a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. The CDBG Housing Rehab, Grant, Rehabilitation Grant. Thank you.
The county has been involved with the City of Pendleton and the City of Pilot Rock and Adams once, a couple of years ago, to apply for and receive a Community Development Block Grant for housing rehabilitation. That was applied for, received, and has been successful. So they now want to do a second round of this grant. In this case, though, it'll be the City of Pilot Rock taking the link rather than the City of Pendleton. So it's just before the Board for Approval of the county's participation in the grant process.
And there's no liability comes back to us on it?
That was my question, because I have some kind of queasy when we have CDBG because of past history.
And the county is not really involved. They're not the fiduciary in this case. So they would not be involved with the requirements for the grant or the reporting purposes.
Okay. Ready for a motion.
So move. You're the only one who signed on it, so I'm comfortable. So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I know. So you're on the hook.
Okay, thank you. Robert, thank you. We are ready for the executive session. Do we need an executive session?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, then let's move to Commissioners' reports.
I can start out, Mr. Chair. We completed the process of selecting a Economic Development Coordinator and selected Gail Nelson, who accepted the position, and she's a very welcome addition. I look forward to her being able to come to work. Because of her commitments on her present job, she has to be delayed coming onboard until the first of February, and she will come and join us at that time. As I said, I'm looking forward to that extra help and assistance. Wanted to let you know that another project that we've been working on and have discussed, Project Red, and I can say no more about it other than that, is moving and is alive. So it's coming our way. Had a discussion yesterday with the Steve Christman and the, I don't have his name here with me, but the head of their UAV program. And they have now got the air taxi, the remote air taxi there for testing at the Pendleton Airport. That's the one, I think when we went out there, we saw the pictures of it.
Are you ready to ride in it?
Yeah, not quite yet. As soon as they finish a few of the tests, I'll be ready. And I have a lot of confidence in computer-assisted or computer-operated vehicles.
Just keep them off Edwards Road?
Don't put them there. Well, actually, they would probably be safer than if all cars were automated. That'd be a safe intersection. Wouldn't have had to spend the money we did. It was a very good discussion with him. We discussed also the problem that Pendleton has in developing light or heavy industry, and it's one of electrical power. And we're working on some potential solutions together that may at least bring this to a focal point that something could happen. So I was pleased with our meeting. We had a very good meeting there. And I'm looking forward to continued work with that project up there. It's very exciting.
Okay, anything else?
Nope. Dick Skerritt?
Nope.
Just so you know, I'm on my way down to meet with the A and D staff, and then I'm going to have, meet with Dan Doran, and then I'll come back.
And how soon do you leave for Seattle?
Oh.
The Apple Cup?
No, I won't go near Husky Stadium.
Oh.
However, should they prevail on Saturday, do know that I will be going to San Francisco next weekend.
All right. The AOC, that went well, as we all know. So it's now on the record that it did go quite well. I've been given a, or was sent a, I guess it's an order or an ordinance put together by Jackson County. Jackson County has since dropped out of, or they had dropped out of AOC. They chair one of the Forest Advisory Committees that is involved in with AOC. And there is some discussion at AOC's level. We've got other counties asking why they're being allowed to be a part of that. But they do belong to the affiliate organization, that being one of them. They just don't belong to AOC as an overall organization. I will be leaving this afternoon for Thanksgiving vacation. Have a meeting with Robert and with Louis Key on questions about payments and funding for the Eurus Grant Committee. There's some confusion there that we need to talk about. Otter Road and Airport Road. We found out that Yumattila County does not, or is not listed, to get that money. That is going to the City of Hermiston. And they're the ones that are listed as a lead agency for those dollars.
Those aren't city streets, are they?
Those are not city streets. So we're working out that issue with the City of Hermiston. We cannot understand why they were listed as a recipient lead agency. It doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Wouldn't it be necessary for us to give it to them?
You could transfer jurisdiction for it.
We could do that. They don't want it to-
All the way from three ninety-five?
Yeah.
Give the motion.
So-
I'd be happy to.
I'm working with Byron and Tom on how we can best do that. However, it will take ODOT saying, okay, we'll substitute county for the City of Hermiston as the lead person.
Who said the grant was made to the City of Hermiston? Was it Hermiston or?
No, it was ODOT.
ODOT. In talking with Representative Smith, he specifically said that that was a allocation for Yumattila County. And so this is quite a surprise.
Well, it was a surprise to all of us.
Wow.
So we're working on all the little details with that.
But is giving them the road an option?
My understanding is after the improvements, then, like we would any street, they would like to take that over, but not Otter. So, and there are some other issues with Airport Road that may involve right-of-way issues because residents have encroached on Airport, as we well know. And we have some fences and possibly one or two outbuildings that are partially in the right-of-way.
The fence on the northeast corner, I know, was not, it was specifically sighted off of it.
On the northeast?
Northeast, the white fence.
Oh, okay. I'm not, I'm not sure, but-
Because I know they asked, before they put it in, they asked about it, and Tom went out and spoke with them.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't be, shouldn't be that. Also, another note on Otter Road is that there's consideration being made to obtain the enough right-of-way to extend the airport at Hermiston. And so that involves the city as well.
Yeah, which would mean that whatever improvements we do to Otter, once those are done, then the, I guess it's the FAA-
Yes.
Once that's approved for the airport, they will have to make the road, when we change it, they've got to put the money up to put it back to-
Yes, the FAA does.
To what its standards are, which means that if it's gravel road, it's our problem. If we put a surface, a hard surface on, even if it's just a chip seal, then they will bring it back to a paved service-
I see.
-surface, meeting the standards of the city's streets.
Very good. Very good.
Hopefully, that doesn't run into problems. So that was the only thing I had. Robert, anything you want to bring up to the board today?
No, don't.
Oh, well, okay. Hearing other business, we are adjourned.
Sorry.
I was trying to think of some-